Recording in progress.
The time is 6:16. This is a special closed session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the rule?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Present.
Thank you.
Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment on closed session items. Seeing no members of the public, we can move to the closed session. We'll be taking items 5.1 and 6, inclusive of 6.1, 6.1.1 in closed session. The time is 6:17.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The time is 6:41. Mr. Kennedy, please report from the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. On a motion by Councilmember Carr, which was seconded by Councilmember Solomon, the council voted five to zero to settle the claim of Geisler Silva Jr., listed as item 6.1.1 on the closed session agenda for property damage to his vehicle in the amount of $4,958.50.
Thank you. The time is 6:42. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
The time is 6:45. This is a special session of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pfeiffer's.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here.
Thank you.
Members, at this time, I'll take approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The role?
Councilmember Pfeiffer's.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Are there members of the public? Please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Mayor Mora, Vice Mayor Carr, and members, I feel it's my duty to the council and to the community to alert you to the fact. To alert you to the fact that having recently returned from Hawaii, I've found that there's a new ruling that you should all be aware of. It is now, as of April 1st today, deemed as offensive and will be enforced. There will be no loud laughing in Hawaii. The alternative is aloha.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll move to our action items. First, we have 6.1, the annual report on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee's goals, principles, and accomplishments for the year 2024.
Hello. Thanks for your time. I'm Jesse Yelson. I'm the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I'm here to present our goals, principles, and accomplishments for 2024, as well as the committee priorities for 2025. So why do we have a B-PAC? So our mission is to provide input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and feedback related to the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan and how that relates to our initiatives. What are our goals and principles? Our goals and principles are to work with the city council and city staff to improve access, infrastructure, and safety for people who ride a bike, walk, roll, or take transit in Emeryville. So just generally, we want to thank everyone at the city, city council, staff, consultants, for all of our efforts. We think 2024 has been a great year. We've accomplished a lot. Had a great bike tour every day, completed or made major progress on the Greenway at Hoochin Park, and installed a heck of a lot of new bike racks. Moving specifically to some accomplishments for 2024, we had a great bike rack inventory mapping and scouting initiative where we went out and cited new locations for bike racks to be installed. We provided extensive feedback on the 40th Street Multimodal Project Phase One for 40th Street. We had a record-breaking bike tour every day with lots of participation and great enthusiasm. We talked about and discussed and provide a lot of feedback on the bicycle and pedestrian access to the marina. And we work with city staff and consultants to develop a plan to design and implement a fast and fruitful pedestrian and cyclist wayfinding program. So what are our priorities for 2025? We want to continue to effectively advocate for the city to improve the safety and accessibility of the Powell and Christie intersection for pedestrians and cyclists. We want to investigate developing additional safe infrastructure and provide recommendations to the 2028-2023 CIP with a top three priority for action of all CIP projects. We want to continue to improve bicycle and pedestrian access to the marina. We want to improve diversity and engagement with the B-PAC through increasing membership and participation and making sure that we have good representation for the city of Emeryville on our committee. We want to continue to improve the complete streets policy and provide good feedback there. And we want to continue implementation of great wayfinding plans and improvements. Our first highlighted priority for 2025 is the Powell-Christie intersection, which we just discussed. It's a really tough intersection for everyone. It's one of the major intersections in the city. And it can be really unsafe for cyclists and pedestrians, which is why we have it as our first highlighted priority. And our second highlighted priority is to increase bicycle and pedestrian access to our wonderful Emeryville Marina. So in conclusion, people walking, biking, and riding transit should be able to safely and quickly move around the city, regardless of age, physical ability, race, sex, gender, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, or immigration status. B-PAC works to recommend policies and projects to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Members, are there any questions? Oh, Member Pfeiffer's.
Yeah, thank you. So a lot of the committees have been diversifying their membership. Have B-PAC taken steps to also increase the diversity, if that's something that you guys care about?
Yeah, it absolutely is something that we care about. We had record, I don't know if it was record, but very low submissions for joining the B-PAC. And we struggled to fill all the vacant seats. And that was kind of a wake-up call for us. You know, it was like, it's easy to not do all right, but this was, you know, this is big. So not only are we trying to fill seats, but we're looking at how we reach out to different parts of the community. Obviously, the word is not getting out that we have these seats vacant. And maybe some people don't even know of the great work that we do. So we're definitely evaluating, really spreading the word, and also asking questions on the applications to better screen people so that we can really fill, create a committee that is filled with all the voices that are present in Emeryville.
Member Pfeiffer's.
So in your opinion, do you feel that where the B-PAC is now, that it does reflect the diversity of Emeryville?
No.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? I actually had one. Jesse, you highlighted the Christie-Powell intersection, which you called out as being quite difficult, I think, as we all know. Obviously, long-term, we have the Emeryville Loop planned. But in the meantime, I'm curious what other measures have been looked at or evaluated by B-PAC as possible mitigations to some of the safety hazards at that intersection?
I don't know that we've necessarily touched on it specifically. But things that we've discussed are better light cycles, additional infrastructure to prevent certain behaviors, certain turning behaviors, traffic calming, and those sorts of things. But it's definitely going to be a continued focus for 2025.
Thank you. All right, let's take a public comment on this item. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on the B-PAC report? Seeing none. Members, any additional comments? Member Solomon?
I'll say real quickly, Ms. Mayor, thank you for the question on Powell-Christie. And just, you know, when I was on B-PAC before I was on council, you know, that was for multiple years, I think, listed as the number one priority, and not necessarily because it was the item that was going to be discussed during that year, but just more as a messaging tool to the council. So just to say, I think we've heard that. And, you know, I hope that B-PAC can continue, from my personal opinion, continue to discuss that to identify solutions that are shorter term than 2020 to 2033, which is outside of, you know, that's on us to implement. But I think appreciate you identifying that as a continued area of concern.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Pfeiffer's.
I just want to encourage a lot of our senior aging population in Emeryville to be involved with B-PAC. It's always been a great pleasure to see you and others, like working with the B-PAC and encouraging them to look at not just the pedestrian experience, but the experience of our senior population as relates to pedestrian pathways. And so, yeah, as well as, I'd like to see more members with families, with children, and what their experience is when it comes to pathways. And so my inquiry around diversity, of course, I always would love to see cultural, ethnic diversity in our committees. But I'm really focused on experience, the experience of the folks who are in our cities. Because you get to let us know if a sign is too high, if it's too low, if it's too bright. You let us know whether or not we really are creating a city of art and innovation. And within innovation is, I believe, inclusion. Thanks.
I just had one additional comment. One was just on this Powell-Christie intersection. One thing that I'd like to look into is if there's any other low-hanging fruit. So the things that you mentioned, the light cycles, minor infrastructure changes. Obviously, an elevated walkway is a major project. And also, as a pedestrian, often at that intersection, I would imagine it's tiring to go up, over, and down. So we're asking a lot from pedestrians with an elevated walkway. So I think that's something that the city can continue to look closely at. And then just as to the diversity of the committee, I do want to thank the committee for the work that it's done. And I want to emphasize that, at least for all the members that I've been part of appointing, in part, we are selecting you not just for your experience, but your capacity to appreciate the breadth and the scope of the committee. So I want to thank you for taking into consideration and imagining the all the folks who would be using that walkway, even people who don't necessarily have the time in the evening or to be able to come attend and participate in the meetings. We can still take into consideration the needs of that population. So I trust that you're doing that, and we'll continue to do that. Item 6.2, Budget Advisory Committee Annual Report on 2024 Committee Accomplishments and 2025 Priorities.
We don't see the chair here right at this time. We have the finance consultant and a committee member here. We could either wait and see if the chair is going to make it and see if we can ask another committee to go up, or...
If Brian or Fran would like to speak to it, I'm fine with that.
I'll take a shot at it, and then obviously Fran can add her comments. So tonight, we're presenting to you the Budget Advisory Committee's report to the council. And on the first slide, we show you the committee membership. We go to the next slide. And here's the committee's goals and principles. The committee was established by the city council to provide input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and feedback relating to the city budget. The committee has five members, appointed by the council, two residents, two business representatives, and a city labor representative. The committee meets six times a year. Next slide. These are a list of the committee's achievements and accomplishments for 2024. And as you can see, 10 items there, a pretty long list, including reviewing the mid-year budget report, the fee schedule... including reviewing the mid-year budget report, the fee schedule, the general fund update and review, the audited financials, the Section 115 pension trust, affordable housing programs. They discussed fire services expenditures, long-term debt, and also ways to ensure that the committee's recommendations are communicated to the council. Next slide. For 2025, the committee has highlighted nine items, including the mid-year budget amendments, which you heard last month, the master fee schedule, both the city budget and the capital improvement budget, the two-year budget that's coming up, the audit, reviewing budget policies to ensure sound financial management, investment policy, Section 115 trust, fire expenditures, and annual housing. Next slide. In terms of their highlighted priorities, they selected one top priority, which is to review budget policies to ensure sound financial management. And then, their secondary priorities, they had two of them. One was to review the 2024-25 mid-year budget amendments, which you heard last month, and also to review the investment policy. Next slide. So, that's the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And obviously, we have a member of the committee here to comment as well.
Thank you, Brian. Members, are there any questions? Member Pryforce.
Thank you for your presentation. Unless there's been, like, a major change in membership of the Budget Committee, what's, what has changed in terms of the Budget Committee's priorities or maybe governing philosophy, views, that would help the city reach a different direction than it has been, a different trajectory than it has been in the past? Just to instill confidence to residents, to workers in the city that things truly are different? Not just in terms of the things that my colleagues and I have agreed on and city staff have worked on, you know, like, folks like you have worked on, but that there is something also a different, I don't know, is it a different vision that's happening amongst the committee? Is it a different conversation? Could you speak to that? What's different, what's changed?
Well, I would say at the last meeting, certainly, when we talked about the major adjustments for the general fund, they did provide quite a bit of feedback to the council, including some recommendations on what they called "the future." So, they not only gave you a set of recommendations about the mid-year adjustments, but they had another set of recommendations about the future. So, I thought that was a little bit further than the committee had gone in the past. I also should mention that at their next meeting, the committee, in addition to looking at the budget, is also interested in talking about the composition of the committee in the future. And so, they've asked that that be added to the agenda, and we'll put that on as well.
Any other questions? Member Pryforce.
Yes, in terms of the composition of the committee, I definitely would recommend to the committee many of our, any of our... I remember at keynote, one of the most amazing things that we did on our board was that we, not just, you know, we served young people, but we actually added a young person to our board. And that really changed some of our assumptions, especially, like, preventing us from being, as she said, corny. And so, and I didn't realize how corny I can be until, you know, a 12-year-old tells you that. And so, is there, I would encourage an opportunity to add not just those who are struggling, sort of paycheck-to-paycheck, those who are low income, those who are low opportunity. But I think it would be, I think it would be amazing if the Budget Committee also, if not adding a member, actually spoke to and reached out to some of our unsheltered population to see how does the city budget, since they're at the bottom, how does our city budget affect them? And if they don't know where they're at, I can point to where they are in our city. But just like talking to them, to sort of just get their ideas on how our budget affects everyone, from our wealthiest residents and workers to those who are struggling the most.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
All right.
I'd like to open up the public comment for this item. Are there members of the public? Please come to the podium. Welcome, Fran.
I'm Fran Cootell. I've served on this committee for about eight years. I was the vice chair, and I have, I would say, stepped back to, so that younger people can come and take on leadership roles in our committee. I feel that's very important. If you don't know, I was a recruiter in the software industry for about 35 years. And I am an adept recruiter of qualified people to participate. So, I want to address a couple of things, particularly what you said, which I'll do at the end. I feel that, as Brian said, the mid-year budget priorities were really important to us this year. And up until this opportunity has come up with Sutter Health, I think we were wondering about what hocus-pocus we could think about so that the city would be on firm ground. We take our work very, very seriously, and using funds that we've set aside is really a concern. We pay attention to that. We pay attention to sales tax. We pay attention to staffing. We pay attention, the funding that we need to help keep our city going and the funds that are being used. I feel that we are at a key point now. We're going to be at a different time in our city as we plan for a major landmark project in our city. And the most important thing for each member of council and for anyone in the public who wants to participate in our committee is some level of financial acumen, being able to read and study reports, being able to really look at the impact of decisions that are making. I don't think we'd be a good training ground for people who don't have the ability to sit down and read a financial document. The documents that we read are prepared by the city.
Thank you for your comment.
And I, finish?
Is there a member of the public willing to cede two minutes of time to the speaker? Please proceed, Fran.
Yes, but I think we would be a good training ground for an intern. If we had someone who is willing to sit in, if there is somebody who has the interest in the budgets of the city and wants to get used to participating in the city, I think it would be great to have an intern, somebody who is interested in finance. And I want to add one other point. When you come to a committee like ours, we really love it when the city council pays attention to the numbers and reads what we have and responds to it. It means a lot, a lot to us, and we appreciate that very much. And you don't have to be a financial genius to participate in our committee, but you do have to be willing to study the numbers. Okay, I didn't plan to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Members, any further discussion on this item? Member Pryforce.
I just wanted to share with the Emeryville public that I have queried our city manager, as well as our staff, on Sutter Health and what it means to the city. And their response is the response that I share with all of you. We simply don't know. It's too early to tell. And so, I appreciate your calls and your texts and all your messages asking about how this would affect our city. But it's too early to tell. We really don't know. And so, that's something we're all figuring out. And anything that we figure out will be very transparent with you.
Any other comments? Let's move on to item 6.4, the Housing Committee's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we skipped the...
Apologies. Item 6.3, the Commission on Aging Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments.
Good evening, honorable council members. I'm Beth Rosales, and I'm actually pitching in for our Chair, Ellen Strauss, who is having a medical issue at this very moment. So, here I am, and also, our vice chair is not available. So, I'm a member of the committee, and actually, a returning member of the committee. And just really quickly, I'm going to assume that you've read the report, and so, I'd rather not read it. And I'd like to start with our accomplishments. In that, in highlighting our accomplishments for last year, we'd like for you to know that we were successful in fulfilling all the vacancies in the commission. And we have an amazing diversity. We have four women and three men. We have two people of color, finally, on the commission. And we have five, have some limitation of some sort, as well as, we have three people who live in a BMR or affordable housing. So, we think that the composition of the committee is quite healthy and reflecting the population of Emeryville. And secondly, as you know, we wrote the city's Age-Friendly Action Plan. And we focus in the area of communications and assistance to our senior community. And later on, I'll speak about a volunteer program that we've initiated. As you know, isolation is really a key problem with seniors. And so, what we've done is we've actually come up with a new initiative, a pilot program for a local volunteer-run help desk, because it's not budgeted, and that's meant to assist issues that seniors may encounter, as well as recalling them guides, the volunteers' guides, because we will not only refer people to resources, but rather also make certain that their case is closed. So, we have a follow-up on that. We are in the process of recruiting volunteers, and we decided to actually start close to home. That all of the members of the commission are volunteering, and we hope that the friends come. And as you know, the senior center has a slew of dedicated volunteers. So, we think that we can at least start with 12 volunteers. And we are planning to launch that initiative in June. And in terms of our priorities for 2025, our top priorities are, at this point, making certain that the help desk is established in June. And we think that we're there. We just recently brought on a commission member who has an LCSW. And so, Ms. Diane Rushwood, who just recently joined us, and will be putting together our volunteer training program. And hopefully, we will have some social work interns who will also staff the volunteer cohort. And she has been willing to actually supervise that. So, we are negotiating at this very moment with either the university, the Hayward, what was formerly the Hayward University, as well as the Samuel Merritt Academy. And thanks to a generous donation for the help desk, we actually are able to purchase a dedicated laptop, which the city couldn't give us. And so, we're quite happy that we're also actively recruiting major guests for this program. Lastly, we'd like to basically convey that we have full support of the BPAC's interest in having the council prioritize pedestrian safety. And as you're aware, that in, it's been slightly difficult for us to actually get some statistics. But every year since 2019, there's been a pedestrian injury and some fatalities. And like heavens, there were no children at the park when the commission, two collisions happened by the marina. And Councilmember Carr did promise that in 2024 that she would raise and assist in prioritizing pedestrian safety. Basically, we are also looking to gather some demographics about seniors here in Emeryville, and basically, so that we can identify maybe some gaps in services. Yeah, so with that, we are very happy and dedicated volunteers who work and live in Emeryville, and thank you very much. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Member Pryforce.
First, I want to start off with an apology. I think I can be quoted as saying that our Public Art Committee and our Housing Committee are some of our most diverse committees. And now, I see I stand corrected. So, congratulations. How have you been able to reach that benchmark of getting and recruiting people as relates to, as relates to diversity in your committee?
We basically had each commissioner look for, come up with a recommendation. And I think that we focused on that this year. And we wanted to fill up the vacancies. We had a number of vacancies. As well, we wanted to make certain that the different locations of the city are represented. So, we have, we have basically the marina and the mid portion and the triangle. And so, we really wanted to make certain that the geography was part of that diversity and not just race, or not just gender, and not just disability. So, we were very conscious, and obviously, we have Kim Burrows, the secretary and staffs the commission. And she's been really helpful in encouraging people to apply. And again, it's really, the pipeline is going to be really critical, I think, in any recruitment effort that the city has.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. I'd like to open things up to the public for public comment. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no members of the public, members, any additional comments? Member Pryforce.
So, my question is to the city manager and to the city attorney. How has it worked in the past when, as relates to the committees, being able to receive donations either through the city? Like, are they considered gifts? Like, is there a way for some of our committees, if they need laptops, if they need certain resources, for us to be able to advocate on, I guess, on our behalf, whether it's a link on a website or something where people, I'm sure, would like to donate to the committees?
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Councilmember Pryforce. I'm not aware of what the practice has been in the past, but in my view, this would be considered a gift to the city. So, if it reaches a certain dollar threshold, I think the city council... Sorry.
I'm going to ask our community services director to answer your question.
Thank you. So, if we're approached about a donation, we have an AI in place. And we actually come to city council with a staff report where you accept that donation before we take it. And we have a great example, is we did get some donations in the past that you have seen through Stanford Healthcare and Cliff Bar recently as well.
Member Pryforce.
Is there a way, and maybe that's a question for Madam Clerk and Madam City Manager, is there a way for us to share, or... is there a way for us to share, or for Rebecca, is there a way for us to share that, like, on our website? Or any way to, like, sort of let the public know that our committees need certain resources or that sort of thing?
That's a really great question. I don't think we have a specific space dedicated to that. But we also have, as Beth had mentioned, we also have a nonprofit at the Senior Center, the Friends of the Senior Center, as well as we have one with the Friends of ACDC. They also can accept donations and then purchase those items for us.
Yeah, it would be great if all of our committee members, if you do need some laptops or support, or any that the city can shore up for you all. And if we can create that kind of channel for that to happen, that would be great. And so if we could extend what we have already set up for all the committees, but as long as there's some sort of communication happening, and that y'all can communicate to Rebecca and say, hey, yeah, we need this, we need that, that would actually help us in our work, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item 6.4, the Housing Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Economic Development and Housing Manager Valerie Bernardo. She's going to be providing this as secretary to the Housing Committee on behalf of this Housing Committee, as the chair was unavailable this evening.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good evening. So as the director mentioned, I am the secretary of the Housing Committee, and our goal is to provide input and recommendations back to the city council on policies and priorities, and feedback related to a variety of housing policies and programs. So that's our overarching goal. In 2024, next slide, please. We had quite a few accomplishments. We had a total of four. The first one is we recommended approval of the 2022 and 2023 Housing Successor Annual Report. That report is a statutory report. We have to submit to the state by April 1st of every day. In that report, we identified that we have 150 loans in our portfolio. We had expended $4.4 million during the fiscal year, and we had an ending balance of assets, as well as resources, totaling $23 million. That did go to city council, and it was approved in March 19th of 2024. We also have a second annual report that's required to go to the state. It is our Housing Element Annual Report. The Housing Committee reviews and makes recommendations related to that. In that report, we identify our progress on meeting our regional housing allocation needs and what programs the city is implementing related to housing. So that also was approved by the city council on March 19th, 2024. Next slide. We also provided a recommendation related to our first home Emeryville program guideline. This is our first-time homebuyer assistance program. This did come to city council in May of 2024. The program previously had only issued one loan in over a 10-year time period. There was recommendations that the committee made regarding changes to certain program guidelines related to front and back end ratio, loan amounts, interest rates. That program is funded through our Measure C Housing Bond, so it actually allocates utilization of those funds at the city. And the residents had approved through a bond issuance, and it also supports work within our Housing Element. That program was launched in September of 2024 and is currently being implemented. And then our fourth accomplishment was recommending approval of the Emeryville Accessible Living Guidelines, or the EALI for short, program guidelines. The purpose of this program was to provide accessibility and aging-in-place improvements to our residents and our existing homeowners association developments related to doing common area improvements, or our multifamily properties could also seek funding for common area improvements. This also supports our Housing Element. It also supports our Age Friendly Action Plan under the Housing Domain. Funding for this program was, came from the state's Pro-Housing Implementation Pilot Program. The council approved those recommended guidelines in June of 2024, and that program launched in July as well. So those were the accomplishments of the Housing Committee. Did want to identify that one of the biggest challenges we had with the Housing Committee last year is we lost seven members. So we had a significantly high turnover. Because of that high turnover, we were only able to meet three times in 2024, and that was between January and June. We were not able to hold any meetings between July and December because we had the inability of obtaining a quorum. So the solutions that the committee was able to come up with when we met in early January was to reduce the number of committee members from nine to seven. The committee thanks council, because you guys did approve that request on January of this year. And then also, they wanted to increase the frequency of meetings from bimonthly to monthly. So instead of meeting six times a year, we would meet 12 times a year, because we had a lot of work that we were unable to get done, and they thought it would be better for us to meet more frequently. And the city council, they also appreciate the fact that you guys approved that change in March of this year. So their goal, number one goal, is to hold more consistent and frequent meetings and to ensure that they're having an active membership that is participating in the meetings and able to attend moving forward. Next slide. Separate from that, they have identified two highlighted priorities. Their first one is to do, continue to make modifications to the low-market rate rental guidelines. The guidelines are intended to provide guidance to both the developers, property managers, but also our tenants in regards to the requirements for participating in the BMR program. This does relate back to our Housing Element in order to ensure that housing is accessible and affordable to very low, low and moderate income households. And we started this discussion in 2024, but as I mentioned, we only met three times. In 2024, we did discuss minimum income to qualify, BMR tenant income increases. The other items that we need to continue in order to complete this work and that we're working to discuss in 2025 will be how we can limit rent increases and other fees, how we can come up with a better policy related to BMR waitlist management, capping unbundled parking fees, and the BMR tenant recertification guidelines. In fact, the BMR tenant recertification guidelines is on the agenda for the Housing Committee meeting tomorrow night, if anybody is interested in participating or hearing that conversation. Next slide. Our second highlighted priority is our tenant stabilization methods. The purpose of this is to provide renter households with the ability, regardless of their means, to live in a safe, decent, unattainable house without undue risk of displacement. This also supports our Housing Element. It's our program QQ, which is our tenant protection measures. We did start, again, this discussion in 2024 with a conversation regarding rent control. We need to finish our work related to this. So in 2025, we are going to be discussing eviction trends, modifications to the residential landlord-tenant relations ordinance, lease requirements, expansion of our BMR tenant protections, and tenants' right to organize. And also tomorrow on the Housing Committee agenda is the tenants' right to organize, if anybody wants to hear that conversation. So we want to be able to continue our work so we can come up with some recommendations to submit back to the city council. Next slide. The other work that we anticipate doing in 2025 is, of course, we'll do the 2024 Housing Element Report. That actually has already been completed and approved and submitted to council, and it was submitted to the state today. Same thing for the 2023-24 Housing Successor Annual Report. That's been complete. We have done an evaluation of our Housing Committee composition. We've had that discussion and compiled recommendations. Will be tallied with all the other committees' recommendations and brought to city council later this year. We will do the 2025 Housing Affordability Table, review the Rental Rehab Program Guidelines. It's also funded out of our Measure C Housing Bond. And then, of course, the 24-25 Measure C Annual Report will come at the end of the year as a look back as to how we've expended those funds and what we've done under our Housing Bond Administration and Expenditure Plan. Next slide. With that, I do want to say thank you again. I'm the secretary. Our chair unfortunately could not be here tonight. You'll see on the left side of the screen all of the committee members that we had between January and June of 2024. And then this year, at least from January till June, until we have our new committees, everybody who was there today. And I definitely want to say thank you on behalf of those committee members that we have there today. They're extremely active. They provide a lot of good conversation and feedback, and they make it interesting for me to be on the committee, and I really appreciate their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Members, any questions? Member Pryforce.
Hi, Valerie. Thank you for your report. I know that sometimes we'll say things that we have in our presentations, some things that make sense to us, because we're sort of in that world. But can you help people explain what rental rehab means? Because that could mean a lot of things to a lot of people.
Absolutely. So within our Housing Admin Bond Expenditure and Admin Program, we identified a variety of programs that the city wanted to fund. One of them was a rental rehab program that would provide funding to existing property owners to provide renovation funds to rehab existing rental properties. So if there's an existing multifamily property that has some kind of capital need, potentially, they would be able to apply for funding from the city in order to do the renovations necessary at the property.
Member Pryforce.
And so for the rental properties, how do... Is that coming from the sort of property owner, property manager? Or can that come from the tenants? So if there is something that they feel, oh, well, this needs to be worked on, is the rental rehab really geared towards them? Or is it more sort of geared towards the property owner or property managers? And is there a way for the two to work together?
So we have not drafted the guidelines. So I'm going to provide you what typically would happen, not what is laid in stone, because there is no stone yet. But traditionally, the funding would be available to the owner of the property, because the funding would be provided as a loan. So they would have to be interested in securing a loan in order to do the renovations. So funding would only be made available to owners. A property manager could apply for the funding on behalf of the owner, but tenants would not have the ability. Tenants would have to relay their concerns to the property manager or the owner. And then again, it would be incumbent upon the owner or property manager to want to apply for the funds and be willing to take on the loan.
Member Pryforce.
Thank you. Would it, within the sort of program guidelines, as that's being composed, will there be an opportunity, or can there be an opportunity that's created for tenants to be able to share their recommendations for rehabilitation that property managers can perhaps share with you all? Like, is there a way for that conversation to happen? So that tenants are a little bit more sort of active or engaged in a way that I believe is similar to... Is the question, is the rental rehab, is that related to the accessibility wherein we provided that loan for communities to be able to rehab their accessibility? Is that somehow connected?
They are similar. And that it was providing renovation funds. The accessibility program specifically focused on accessibility improvements to homeowner properties. This would be only funds available to make renovation improvements to rental properties. So it would not be something that's owner-occupied or managed through an HOA. A tenant, of course, could communicate their request to the property owner. But again, because the liability would rely on the owner of the property, we could not take a request from a tenant separate from the owner wanting to secure funding. But we can definitely think about ways for the owners to engage their tenants in identifying needs. That's possible.
Gotcha. Because from my recollection, that program, the accessibility program, was kind of, it was, I would say, not largely, but probably halfway, or at least 35% underutilized, that there were still funds left over. And so, yeah, so an opportunity for there to be some engagement. It could be, hey, I want this gym equipment here, or I would like the pool to be heated, and, you know, and maybe something wherein the tenants are able to provide something to their property managers, property owners. So to be able to, and hopefully that they'll make that recommendation to you all as they're pursuing these funds.
I will say, on the accessibility program, we did have one homeowner who wanted an improvement in the common areas. And so they submitted their request to the HOA. And the HOA did include that in their request to the city for funding. So that did happen on the accessibility program. It could also happen on a rental program as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Valerie.
Any other questions? Thank you, Valerie. Now is the time for public comment. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, members, other discussion? Member Pryforce.
I just want to say that Valerie does a lot, does a lot. And for the committee members to have taken the charge to not only join these seats, but to meet 12 times a year, it's pretty amazing. So I want to give a shout-out to the Housing Committee. And I know this might get me sanctioned again, but, yeah, when I think about labor negotiations, I think about Valerie. I think about like how hard our staff really work to not only do the job that they're assigned, but, you know, Valerie's also taken a lot of complaints in the community. And can you imagine if, you know, if you had to receive, as a committee, so many complaints from residents in the city? Like, hey, this is what's going on, this is what's happening. And so it's not only brought to her doorstep as a staff member, but also in terms of the committee. And so I just re-appreciate all the hard work that she does, that all of our staff do.
Any other member comments? Let's move to item 6.5. This is our last committee update with the Parks and Recreation Committee Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Nicholas Robert. I'm the committee chair for the Parks and Rec Committee. Excited to be here tonight, tell you about our accomplishments last year and what we're up to this year. So just a little bit about the Parks and Rec Committee and our goals. Next slide, please. So providing input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and feedback on the city's recreation programs, cultural events, activities, public use of parks, developments of new parks. It's a long list, but mostly enhancing what we already have here in Emeryville. Yeah, and trying to go forward with adapting our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Next slide, please. Beautiful shot from the beach there. Next slide, please. Cool. So accomplishments last year. I think our major accomplishment was supporting the staff with the design and distribution of our Parks and Rec Survey. We noticed that it was time to get the word out. As you brought up, Member Pryforce, is getting more voices heard, not just from volunteers on the committee, but trying to reach out to the community and really get some of that feedback. We've also been collaborating with Emeryville Children and Nature to host a pilot program in Stanford Park. Started a new quarterly park site visit for our committee to get out there and enjoy the parks, take notes, share those with the committee, and kind of get back. Because it is volunteer position, and it is hard to get to the parks, but it's better to kind of share that experience with all of us. Continued to encourage progress for the McLaughlin East Shore Park. Coordinated with Public Works on park-related projects, like the Tree Canopy Project Study and other items. And a big issue in Emeryville here, we advocated for the increase of dog bag dispensers in all parks. Keep our streets clean. Next slide, please. All right. Some of our ongoing accomplishments, stuff that we're keeping our eye on, is community services, events, and programs, as well as planning division developments, changes in state, and local laws affecting our parks. Cool. Next slide. Just, yeah, thank you. All right. So our first highlighted priority is to work with city staff to utilize those survey results. And the committee quarterly park visit feedbacks to help us initiate and update our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Just a note, we got about 276 responses to the survey, so it's a pretty good sample size for Emeryville's size. So pretty happy with that result. And our second priority is to continue and make recommendations for children and nature programs through park improvements, urban greening, and programming. Some other priorities we have for this year. Work with city staff to utilize those survey results. Prioritize and bring new ideas, and support current recreational programming, and support Emeryville traditions. Support staff in strategizing marketing opportunities to spread awareness of current and future programmings. One of, we kind of got to get the word out online. I think QR codes are a great way to do that, just to let people in the know of like the parks they're visiting and how to interact and book these things and so on and so forth. We're going to continue to make recommendations for children and nature and programs through park improvements, urban greening and programming, and continue to encourage progress on McLaughlin East Shore Park. Some more great shots from around our city. Okay. So we're going to continue to prioritize our parks as essential infrastructure throughout the city operations, management, planning, and coordination with the PR Advisory Committee. Advocate for increased access and funding for outdoor recreation in our city. Continue to advocate for the prioritized Parks and Recreation CIP projects. Continue to advocate for projects and actions related to climate resistance, rewilding, and inequitable access to nature, as well as continuing to advocate for urban greening for our city parks, as well as environmental health strategy and community health strategy. Cool. All right. And I think one last slide. Some more great shots. Thanks, Rebecca. Cool. All right. Thanks, everybody. And I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Nicholas. Members, any questions? Member Pryforce.
If anyone takes a quick glance at Rebecca Sermano and she has a proud mama face on, you all should be proud because not only have, what you all have done, of course, alignment with community services, has gotten so much recognition from local elected officials, from so many awards. But the, the most important thing is that people want to live in Emeryville because of the valuable work that you do. But it's question time. And so one of the biggest questions that I get a lot, and I know it doesn't necessarily fit into the green area, is the skate park. The skate park, and that's something I've raised with Rebecca, and you may, you may want to answer Rebecca, but what is going on with the skate park? It, it feels under-loved. And, and, and also, is there perhaps a potential for, yeah, for, for your future parks to maybe have a bigger, for us to have a bigger skate park? And that, I think that this is something that, yeah, when we, we get the, 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 we get the adults who use the skate park. I mean, let's be real, a lot of adults use the skate park. But for a lot of our, our kids who get to that age where they want to use it, sometimes they feel safer in Berkeley, which is well-litted, it's huge, and they have that. And, yeah, and I think that hopefully maybe one day we can provide something even better.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it is loved a lot by the people who use it. And, but you bring up some good points of things that it is missing. I'd like to point out, our member, Andy Eggers, she was part of our kind of outreach group that we're doing, and she went and visited and talked to the people who were there. They have a community, they love the park, but they do have some notes. Like, the bathroom doesn't, can't really be used. They asked for some more lighting, but they do have a community there. And I think like supporting them will help kind of let more people be part of that community. So just making it a little bit more accessible, we have ideas.
Member Pryforce.
In terms of the lighting, or even any other lighting with the parks, sometimes birds have more rights than we do. It is our, sort of, what's the word for, for birds? It's, I forget it. But how, is that, does that become an issue in terms of the lighting, in terms of?
I'm not aware of that. I think, as maybe it's not all the lighting, but I think a lot of the people who use the park kind of bring their own equipment. They help kids who are kind of learning how to skate. I think trying to work with the people who are there all the time to figure out what they need most is probably the best way. Like, they set up their own personal bench to work on the skateboards and kind of teach these kids how to do it. I think kind of investing more in potential nice amenities for the park to kind of get people as like, to talk and, and teach is probably a better way than maybe lighting, if we want to go cost-effective.
Gotcha.
But I think it's just listening to that community.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you, everybody.
Now is the time for public comment. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no members of the public. Members, any additional comments? Member Pryforce.
Just thank you for all you do for, for our babies, for our seniors, and everyone else who benefits from everything that you all do. It, it really, really matters. Oh, thank you.
I would just like to thank the Parks Committee and all the committees on the updates provided today. The council greatly appreciates the work that you do. Thank you. The time is 7:46. This meeting is adjourned. There's another meeting. The time is 7:47. This is the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that all members are still seated. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Members, do we have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. You can come to the podium if you have public comment. You'll have two minutes.
Here on behalf of Madam DA Ursula Jones Dixon for the proclamation. James, my name is James Williams. I serve as a victim witness advocate in the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Assistance Division. I am honored to be here this evening on behalf of our district attorney to accept this proclamation recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week. This proclamation is our shared commitment to support survivors.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. We have, this is actually, we'll have another meeting in about one minute. And I'll actually read the proclamation beforehand. My apologies. Members, we have the consent calendar. Are there any, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Actually, I'd like to pull something out of the consent calendar, which is.
So this is for the, the redevelopment commission, committee?
True.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
All right. We have no action items. The time is 7:49. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:49. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that all members are still seated. At this time, I will take a approval of the final agenda. We do have one modification, and this is to enter Agenda Item 12.2, Exhibit C, Fiscal Year 2025 Mid-Year Budget Adjustments. So, please consider that for the approval.
Motion to approve the final agenda as amended with the attachment.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Special orders of the day. The proclamation of the City of Emeryville recognizing April 6th through 12th as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas more than 26 million people become victims of crimes each year, and these crimes affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division is dedicated to ensuring the rights of crime victims and their families by providing services to aid in their recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime as they reclaim their sense of safety, well-being, and dignity. The Victim Witness Assistance Division staff assists victims of crime without regard to a person's race, gender, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, gender identity, or immigration status. And victims are faced with many challenges because of crime. Oftentimes, victims enter systems that fail to meet their needs, provide appropriate services, and fail to treat them with the dignity and respect that they deserve. And involving survivors helps victim service providers and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of underserved victims who seek assistance and justice. The Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division was the first such program established in 1974, beginning with one victim advocate. Today, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division employs more than 50 individuals dedicated to working with victims of crime. And in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation. Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division partners with survivors, community justice providers, criminal justice professionals, and victim advocates that work together to enhance a criminal justice system response that is accessible, culturally competent, and appropriate for all victims of crime. In 2024, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division provided over 721 services to more than 105 crime victims in Emeryville, including but not limited to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, human trafficking, crimes against elders and dependent adults, sexual assault, domestic violence, robbery, and other crimes. For victims of crime without independent financial means, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division facilitated financial support through the California Victim Compensation Board Program, CalVCB. The Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division has been a leader in outreach and services to underserved populations, including commercial sexual exploitation of children, sexual assault victims from cold-hit DNA cases, immigrant victims, urban youth, victims in the LGBTQIA+ community, and victims with physical, intellectual, and/or developmental disabilities. The Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division has been bridging the gap between law enforcement and the community and building the community's trust in the criminal justice system. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025, presents an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City of Council of the City of Emeryville that April 6th through 12th, 2025, is hereby proclaimed Victim Rights Week in the City of Emeryville, and the City Council affirms its commitment to the respect, and to respect and enforce victim rights and address their needs. We express our appreciation for those victims and survivors of crime who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve the response to victims of crime and build a more just community, as proclaimed by the Mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, April 1st, 2025.
On behalf of District Attorney Ursula Jones Dixon, we received this proclamation. We thank you for the proclamation, and we really are excited about the work that they do, that we do. And as a victim witness advocate, I am one that deals with mainly the homicides. And so it is an excellent program, it's helped many people. And we just thank you for the recognition and all that you do.
Thank you so much. Next, we have announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
I don't have a report this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember special announcements or reports on meeting attendance? The city managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. No report this evening.
Members, do you have any ex parte communications on any of the items on the agenda? It's just a proclamation?
No. It's not an action item.
Any ex parte communications? Now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Seeing no members of the public. Next is the consent calendar. Members, are there any items that you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Or do we have a motion to approve? Member Pryforce.
Yes, I'd like to pull 10.7.
This is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing a grant agreement for, okay, $266,000. Okay, let's, do we have a motion for the consent calendar excluding 10.7?
Motion to approve consent calendar excluding 10.7.
Seconded.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearings. The first item is a, we.
We do have to review and then vote on 10.7.
Yes, as our, for the action, I'll discuss it with the action items.
Thank you, sorry.
Item 11 is the noise waiver hearing. Members, are you amenable to waiving presentation for this noise waiver?
Yes.
Yes.
No presentation needed. Thank you. This being a public hearing, the time is now, the public hearing is now open at 7:59 PM. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on the noise waiver request? Seeing no members of the public, the time is 7:59. This is now closed. Members, are there any questions or discussion on this item or a motion?
Motion to approve the noise waiver.
Second.
Resolution.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is action items. And let's take the pulled action item from the consent calendar, 10.7. Do we have a presentation on this item, or should we?
We're happy to answer any questions you may have. We do not have a prepared presentation for this item as it's a consent item.
Fair enough. Do we have any questions from council on this item? Member Pryforce.
Yes, I, before we approve this funding, I. I wanted to ask if there has been a history with this development as it relates to issues that this funding could or could not, cannot address.
I'd like to ask Economic Development Manager Valerie Bernardo, as she's working closest with this property owner.
Good evening. So yes, there were some tenant complaints that came in in 2024 related to some concerns at the property. There was a code enforcement violation notice that was issued related to some of the items that they identified. This funding could have been used to address some of those issues, but the property is going to use their remaining reserves to address those issues. So these funds would come in to provide additional funding to address some additional maintenance issues that the property has.
Thank you.
Member Carr?
Valerie, I'd just like to ask one more question. So are you going to have a timeline for accountability of how the funds are being used, just like you had before for the PIP for those you gave the loans to?
So when it comes to accountability, because it'll be used as a capitalized reserve, they will have to submit a request anytime they want to withdraw the funds from their reserve account related to the $266,000 that potentially will be providing to them. Any additional reserves that are in that account that come from the regular rent roll, they don't have to submit those to us. But yes, they would have to submit a request. The city would review that. We do that on a couple of other properties. And then we notify them, yes, it's okay to withdraw the funds from their account. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Thank you, Valerie. We'll now take public comment on this item. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on 10.7? Seeing none. I'll move this back to discussion. Members, do we have a motion? Member Pryforce?
So I just want to stress to those who are residents of that property that this funding will be able to remedy some of the issues, but not all of the issues. We want to, I want to encourage you to keep fighting a good fight, and then hopefully we'll get to a place where many of the issues that you have had concerning this property, concerning this owner and property manager will be remedied. Thank you.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor.
I'll make the motion to approve 10.7.
Seconded.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item 12.1, Resolution of the City Council Authorizing City Manager to Commit to a Permanent Financing Development Loan. Welcome back.
Thank you. So we do have a presentation this evening. So again, I'm Valerie Bernardo. I'm the Economic Development and Housing Manager. And tonight, I want to talk with you guys in regards to a request to authorize a permanent development loan and issue a second amendment to a lease disposition and development agreement for our 4300 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing Project. Next slide. So a little background. This background does not go back as far as this project has been around. I'm only going to go back to 2019, so just a six-year timeline. So in 2019, the City Council did authorize the release of an RFQP. And you'll see at the bottom of all of my slides, if there is an acronym, I've tried to identify it at some point at the bottom. So released that RFQRFP for an intergenerational rental housing development at our 4300 San Pablo Avenue site. In July of 2020, the council did select EAH as the developer for the project. And in March of 2021, the City Council committed the Alameda County Measure A1 bond to this project, which is about $2.5 million. In September of 2021, the state adopted SB Senate Bill 591, authorizing the creation of intergenerational housing. The reason that was so critical was because it previously was not an allowable use. It was a fair housing violation in the state of California because there are intergenerational projects elsewhere in the country. But in the state of California, there was a fair housing violation. So the City Council, in addition to the developer, worked with the state legislators to get legislation put in place so that we could actually do intergenerational housing. Also, in September of 2022, the council authorized the execution of the land disposition and development agreement, or the lease disposition and development agreement. And then in December of '22, the Community Development Department actually issued the entitlements for the project. They did that through a streamlined process to where the Community Development Director was actually able to approve the project. In October of 2024, Alameda County extended the construction commencement date related to their A1 bond funding to October of 2027. Previously, it had a requirement that construction had to commence within three years, which would have been in 2024. There was no way that was going to happen, and I'll get a little bit into later why. And so subsequently, also, City Council, you guys also authorized us to amend the construction loan closing deadline within our LDDA. We actually did a two-year extension, taking us to October 2026. Next slide. So what was the 4300 San Pablo Intergenerational Project? It was going to be a five-story building with 68 units. Thirteen of those units were going to be dedicated towards transitional age youth. Fifty-four of those units were set aside for seniors, and one unit was going to be set aside for the property management company staff. There's going to be 7,000 square feet of amenity space. The courtyard was going to be on the second level of the property. There were going to be a minimum of 17 parking spaces, maximum of 34, depending upon whether or not they actually did stacker parking. And then the units were going to be set aside for the rents. Let me rephrase that. The rents would be set between 20% to 60% of the area median income, serving households between 0% and 60% of AMI. At least 35 of the 68 units were going to be specifically dedicated to serve those households between 0% and 30% of AMI, and the rents would be set at that level. And there is a rendering of what the approved project looks like. Next slide. The financing that was proposed for this project was about $52 million, which is what was needed in order to develop this project. The land was going to come from the city. It was going to be a donation. We also had the Alameda County A1 bond, that $2.5 million. They were going to seek funding from the State Department of Housing and Community Development through their multi-family housing program, MHP, for about $17 million. Look for federal home loan bank fundings of a million, tax credits, $25 million. They were going to take on debt of about $4.4 million. We had received a HUD earmark for this project of $500,000, and then they were going to also contribute about $3.5 million in equity. The development timeline required that they would seek tax credit financing by March of 2024. And then, of course, originally, they were going to have to close on construction by October of 2024. So that was what was originally proposed. Next slide. So what are the problems that we've had? So the first one I already mentioned, intergenerational housing projects weren't allowed in California. We did solve that by getting SB 591 signed into law so that we could move forward with this project. That was the first delay we had in moving this project forward from when the developer was selected. The second issue we have is the Measure A1 Housing Bond requires 20% of the units to be set aside for households at 20% of the area median income. Projects need rental subsidy programs, like the project-based voucher program, in order to support units at 20% of AMI. That's the only way a project serving that low level of income can move forward. Third problem, the developer cannot apply for financing for a project that does require rental subsidy until they secure the rental subsidy. So what issue has that created? The Housing Authority of Alameda County, or HACA, has delayed the release of a Notice of Funding Availability for project-based vouchers since 2022. We've been in conversations with them since late 2021, once we finally got the intergenerational housing project issue addressed. And about every quarter or so, they've identified that one is forthcoming, and then they have delayed it. They probably since 2022 have delayed the release of that NOFA about five to six times. And at the end of 2024, they announced that they would not be issuing a NOFA that year. And potentially, they would not be able to issue one in 2025 because they have a funding shortfall. They have also sent another notice reminding us that they still have that funding shortfall, so one will not come in 2025. So what does that mean? Without project-based vouchers, the project can't support any debt. Next slide. Then our fourth problem. The financing assumptions that were provided in the project are no longer accurate. It's been five years. So construction costs have risen 8% in five years. The project site is no longer located in a HUD-designated difficult-to-development area, which results in a loss of tax credit funding that the project would be eligible for. The project also, through the multi-family housing program, that program has changed its guidelines. So previously, in the second round of funding for MHP guidelines, there was an additional $25,000 per unit that the project would have been eligible for because it was serving special-need populations. That is no longer an eligibility requirement for that additional $25,000. So we no longer have access to that funding. And then the last part of the MHP funding is, the last round of MHP funding is April 15th, 2025. And today is April 1st, 2025. This funding is set to be completely exhausted from the state. So whether or not this funding program will come next year, we just don't know. So what does that result in? Well, that gives us about a $12 million funding gap for this project. That's assuming, without the rental subsidies, they can't support any debt. That funding is gone. That project-based voucher is required in order to use the AC, the Alameda County A1 bond. So if that funding comes out of the project, and then the loss of the tax credits, the loss of the ability of funds from MHP, it gives us a $12 million shortfall. Next slide. So what is our solution? We're recommending, the first thing is that the city amends the lease disposition and development agreement to revise the scope of development so that the project will have rents set between 30% and 60% of AMI instead of the 20% and 60%. That no less than 14 of the units will serve households below 30% of AMI, which we call extremely low income. That there will be 14, not 13, transitional-age-youth units. And we've also recommended that if the developer, EAH, is able to secure project-based vouchers, if by some chance, over the next couple of years, if vouchers are available and they're able to secure them, that the developer will increase the number of units serving extremely-low-income households so that at least 20% of the units will be set aside for the 20% AMI group. The second request is that the city commit an amount not to exceed the $12.7 million funding shortfall as a permanent financing loan for the 4300 San Pablo project. We have reached out to the Alameda County and talked with them about whether or not a waiver is possible for the 20% AMI requirement, which is why that was embedded into the project. That would have to go before their Board of Supervisors, but the application is due April 15th for MHP funding. There's not enough time to go before the Board of Supervisors before that application. So we're recommending that the City Council commit the full 12.5. And if the Board of Supervisors is able to issue a waiver, that the city would then actually only commit 10.2 million. But we want authorization to do the full amount in case the county is not able to remove that waiver requirement of the 20% of AMI. Currently, the city does have about $14 million in uncommitted Measure C Housing Bond funds and low-mod income housing asset funds that is available to support this project. Those funds under the Measure C Housing Bond would come from our Development Opportunity Program as well as our Special Need Housing Program. Third, we're recommending that the developer go ahead and move forward with submitting an application for MHP by the April 15th, 2025 deadline so that they don't lose this last opportunity to apply for MHP funds. Next slide. So what does that mean? What does, how does that change the project? So the revised development scope would be that the units would be targeted to 30% to 60% of AMI, no less than, again, 14 units at that 30%. I provided a chart just to kind of show you what that means. They have units within the project that would be designated at 30%, 40%, 50%, and 60% of AMI. And so you'll see for a studio unit, the 30% of AMI units would cost a tenant approximately $731. Up to a household at 60% of AMI, the maximum rent would be 15, or the potential rent would be 1553. The incomes that would be served would be households up to $65,400. The city's investment into this project, instead of just being the land, would be no more than the $12.7 million for this project to move forward. Next slide. So what would the impact of these requests be? Related to funding, the failure for the developer to apply for MHP by this April 15th, 2025 deadline is going to delay the project from being able to move forward until another funding source has been identified and is released. That will result in further increase in construction costs, and the ability to obtain a tax credit award by 2026 would require the funding to already be in place because tax credits is the last source of funding that a project seeks. That would then require the City Council, again, to authorize us to revise the deadline to close on construction, and would also require the county to require, to do an extension of their timeline to commence construction. If funding for the project is not secured in 2025, they cannot apply for tax credits, and both the council and the county would have to do another extension. Regarding income targeting, there's no guarantee as to when HACA will have the ability to release a Notice of Funding Availability for project-based vouchers, thereby providing the rental subsidy that's required in order to support 20% of AMI rents. We've all heard of some of the challenges that have been happening in our current federal government system. Programs have already been cut. And if they're already receiving an issue with funding for the project-based voucher program currently, that is a proposed reduction that will happen. And so I think this will be an issue that is around for several years. Additionally, households below 20% of AMI still can be served at the project. I want to make sure that that's extremely clear. But the rents would be set at 30% of AMI. So it's not that people below 20 couldn't live at this project. It's just that the rent is set at the 30% of AMI level. Next slide. So we are, again, coming here today to request you guys to authorize the city manager to commit a loan up to $12.7 million between the city and EAH for the development of the 4300 San Pablo project, as well as a second amendment to our lease disposition and development agreement, allowing us to change the scope of development that's been outlined here tonight. And I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Valerie. Just one clarifying question upfront. This is essentially the same proposal that's been, or the same recommendation that was presented previously during the closed session. Apologies. Questions, members?
Thank you. So can you share a little more? So the number of apartments that are, that would be to 30%, that has shrunken, right, than the number of units available?
Correct. Previously, we required, let me go back in my notes because right now it's not, 35 of the units at 30.
35.
And now we're at 14.
14, okay. So with the 14%, where am I getting 14%? With the 20% of the, of the AMI, so that means then that, that those who are at 20% AMI, their cap in terms of the amount of income that it can earn will be set at 30%, and the pricing of the unit will be at 30%?
Correct.
I think that that's great. I think that's a great compromise. But I'd like to also see a compromise in the number of units available should funding become available, that the, that these, that these units, that there is a target in the future, maybe visited every two years, wherein they're able to, if they're able to secure the funding, increase the number of units that serve that number. It's, yeah. So is that possible for us to make that demand or have, or set that expectation?
1,000%. In fact, we've already included- In fact, we've already included it. So we did include the requirement that if they're able to receive project-based vouchers in the future, before they actually go to construction, commencing construction, that they would be required to ensure that, again, 20% of the units are set aside for households at 20% of AMI, in addition to the 14 we already have. So that would get us back to the 35.
Okay. What about post-construction? After they build, they're fully operational, that sort of thing? Is that something that could be?
That unfortunately is not something. So when financing, financiers look at the project, they are underwriting it based on the projections that are provided upfront. So if there was some kind of requirement that in the future, they would want to underwrite it that way today, and that would change the entire landscape of how the project could potentially get funded, and whether or not it actually could generate enough revenue in order to be sustainable and, again, be qualified to receive funding.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Valerie. Seeing no members of the public, members, are there any final comments or a motion on the resolution?
I can make a comment. I really appreciate the thoroughness that the Housing Department went through in order to explore the solutions to make the project happen and move it forward. And with that, I can make the motion, unless someone has another comments.
Member Welch.
I just want to thank Valerie. I know it can be challenging as the council representative for the Housing Commission. It's been, you know, something, it's been very challenging, but I appreciate your work and Chad's work on pivoting to make sure that this project goes through. We've seen it not necessarily in Emeryville, but across the region, that when the funding, trials and tribulations, as they feel like, come through, many cities, they just, they hit a wall, and then they just, they'll abandon the project. And so, this is something that's necessary, something that we've promised to our community, something that's going to be very necessary, something that we know is very necessary. Seniors and teenage youth are two demographics that we know are highly housing insecure and make up a lot of the population that are experiencing homelessness here in the Bay Area and across the nation. And so, I'm happy to see this project move forward and for, just thank you for remaining flexible and trying to figure out how to keep this project moving forward. And I will be happy to second Madam Vice Mayor's motion.
Madam Clerk? The role? Oh, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
So I wanted to, to the comments that were shared earlier in terms of the pivoting, I do have, I do have my concerns about the number of units shrinking, and I completely understand the, the times that we're in, and then financially, economically, that securing as many units, and then units of that, of that number, of the 20% AMI. But when it comes to the amount of, of units that the city of Emeryville promises to produce, we have fallen short, even though this does meet the ELI, Extra Low Income, that 20% population, AMI population, is what I'm concerned about. And so, if there's a way that we can still secure, so that, that we are explicitly targeting 20% AMI residents to be able to qualify and fill those units, even though they'll be paying at 30% AMI, that if there's a way to secure that, to make sure that they are honoring that, I mean, because it, sometimes it'll be, it'll be on paper, but in the actual practice of it, may not look like what we, what we want, what we desire. And so, so I am leaning towards approving, but it is something that, that I'd, you know, I'd like to take a look at, I guess, as this develops, to make sure that that's something that we are, that that's being honored, that we, that they are targeting the 20% AMI and those who can meet that 30% AMI pricing.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have 12.2, the resolution amending fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, Brian Mora from RGS, your finance consultant. On March 4th, we came before you to talk about the 2425 general fund major amendments, and we told you at that meeting we'd be back this month to talk about the amendments for all funds, so that's what's up tonight. So just to go through some background, the 2325 budget was adopted in June of 2023, and it covers both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And as we note on the slide, on March 4th, several general fund budget adjustments were made to bring the budget into balance, including reallocating all of the residual property tax funds to the general fund, rather than splitting it 50/50 with other funds, transferring $5 million from the Economic Uncertainty Reserve and $2 million from the capital fund, and also establishing a 20% target for the general fund unassigned balance. What we're going to talk to you about tonight is a process where the Finance Department, city manager, and city departments met over the last several weeks, developing detailed mid-year budget adjustments for all funds, and those are shown in attachments 1, 2, and 3. Next slide. So just to recap a little bit of what happened in March, this is a list of the general fund adjustments that you adopted, as we noted, including the reallocation of the residual property tax funds, reducing the expenditures this year by leaving $2 million worth of positions either vacant or operational cuts, the two transfers, merging the Economic Uncertainty Reserve and disaster reserves, establishing the 20% policy, and also assigning $3.3 million from the Economic Uncertainty Reserve for social security settlement in the future year. Next slide. So, again, just to recap here, some of the results of those strategies. The residual property tax covers $3.2 million of the $8.7 million gap this year. It increases the general fund allocation balance to $11.5 million, bringing it up to the 20% target. It decreases the capital improvement fund by $2 million. It also decreases the newly merged Economic Uncertainty Reserve from $29.8 to $21.5 million, bringing it down from 53% to 40% at this point. Next slide. This is a slide updated that we showed you last time, that showed you kind of the impact of some of these things in the current 2425 year. And again, as you can see, the general fund unassigned balance is at $11.5 million, which is at 21%. And also, the merged Economic Uncertainty Fund is now at 40%. Next slide. And again, just to highlight some of the additional budget strategies we're looking at, we're doing analysis and audits in several areas, including sales tax, utility tax, business license, and property tax. We also are in the early phases of putting together an RFP for a cost allocation plan and fee study, and potentially looking at some grant assistance. Next slide. This is an updated version of the revenue measure options that we're looking at. We're continuing to refine this as we get closer and closer to budget time. The significant change on this slide is on the utility user tax. We did do a review of the utility user tax in neighboring cities, and what we found was that the Emeryville rate of 5.5% is a little on the low side, that it is more typical in this area for that rate to actually be 7.5% and for it to include video and streaming services, which are not included at the moment in Emeryville. So if you made those two changes, we estimate that that would bring in $1.95 million in revenue, so that's been added to that slide. The one area where we don't have a number yet is in business license tax increases, and on that, we are awaiting a estimate from HDL. We also would talk with them about reviewing the cap, although there's only one business in Emeryville that's at the business license cap, so that's not likely to be a significant contributor. Next slide. So here's some highlights, the things that have occurred between last month and this month. Perhaps the most notable is the purchase of the Biomed parcels by Sutter, which brought in $11.23 million roughly a week ago. And this will allow the city to push out the need for additional budget transfers to the general fund by a year, is our current thinking. On the flip side, it's important to note that Sutter is a nonprofit health foundation, and that means they are exempt from all property and business license taxes in the city as soon as they take title, which they have now done. And so we are in the process of estimating what that revenue loss will be, and also we're trying to assert, figure out how much of that revenue loss will go against the general fund versus how much of it will go against the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, but there will be a revenue loss there. Also, on the business license tax revenues, we have lowered the estimate from $5.8 million to $5.1 million. The reason for that is, for some reason, this year, we've seen a drop in renewals of roughly 30% compared to the prior year. We're monitoring that to see if it's going to be necessary to do some follow-up audit and collection work later in the year, but we have some concerns about what's happening there. In the capital fund, Fund 254, the significant changes there relate to your Fortieth Street project. Public Works has been able to secure two major grants for that work, namely a $13.1 million grant from MTC and another $8.2 million VRF grant, which enables them to fully fund that project. And then finally, in the investment earnings category, we reported to you last month that there was a $400,000 increase in this category for the general fund. There's additional increases in other funds, and that's the reason that as you look at the detail for the other funds, you see investment earning increases repeatedly listed there. However, we do note that because we have some major projects coming online, and also because of transfers into the general fund, we think that in future years, the investment earnings may be somewhat reduced for that reason, and also potentially there may be some changes in interest rates. Next slide. So our recommendation tonight is to receive the staff report, accept any public comment you may receive, discuss the proposal, and then adopt the proposed resolution amending the budget with the adjustments shown in attachments 1, 2, and 3. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Members, any questions? Member Solomon?
Just a quick question on the, on the previous slide, just the phrasing made me think, when you say that the Sutter purchase will defer transfers to the general fund, that's not because we're spending that $11.2 million now, it's just that we have an additional batch of savings that means that we don't need to make those transfers for future.
Well, right. What happened is, last month, you transferred $7 million, and then you had the additional $3 million. So in effect, you moved $10 million over. Now you have another $11 million that was not anticipated. So, without crunching the numbers yet, and again, we'll be back to you next month with the budget study session, just with rough estimates, it would appear that you'll be able to move most, if not all, of the need for money next year. However, because this is a one-time revenue source in years three, four, five, and beyond, without either additional revenue measures and/or cuts, you're going to have the problem again. So, and that's one of the reasons that we've highlighted, the fact that there's still money in the Economic Uncertainty Reserve, there's still money in the capital, and we would think that those are probably the places where we would look in succeeding years to find that, you know, that amount in terms of the transfers. And that will be a continuing phenomenon until such time as either you have revenue measures and/or reduced expenses, or some combination thereof.
Member Pryforce?
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit more about the utilities tax? Does that include PG&E? And would that actually raise the rates, that, potentially raise the rates? It would be the companies that actually raised the rates as response, but could this potentially increase how much people pay in terms of their utilities? And specifically, streaming was mentioned, and so was that, like internet, for example?
Okay. The utility tax in Emeryville currently covers gas, electric, and telecommunications. That's it. In other cities, it covers video, cable TV, and streaming. It also, in some cases, includes water. It can include garbage, it can include recycling. When we looked at the surrounding cities, what we found was that streaming and video was very common, you know, and so that would be one thing to add, and that's about $350,000 a year in revenue. The other $1.6 million would be increasing the rate from 5.5% to 7.5%. And to your question, you're right, that would increase the utility bills of the residents in those categories that are covered. I should also mention that in looking at other cities, while 7.5% seem to be sort of the average, and you're at 5.5%, there were some cities, I'm sure, again, because of budget challenges, that have gone beyond 7.5%. There's one city at 8, and I believe it was Richmond, that is actually at 10 now. And our thought is that, again, as we talk about potential revenue measures later in the year, and obviously, we'd want to discuss that with the council, in terms of whether or not you had an interest in these different options that we showed earlier, and what rates were considered, we'd also want to work with the outreach folks and the pollsters to see what the voters were thinking in these. My experience is that the utility tax tends to be one of the more difficult revenue measures to pass, as opposed to things like the quarter cent sales tax, the business license tax, and the hotel tax, which tend to be a bit easier, relatively speaking. However, given the size of your budget shortfall, I'm afraid that over time, you may have to consider several, if not all, five of those options, because you are facing a pretty serious problem, so.
Other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Seeing no members of the public, members, I'll bring this back for discussion or a motion. Member Pryforce?
So, I am definitely not a fan of the utility tax. That, for many Californians, Emeryville, this has been raised at our council meetings before, I believe by Frank Quatell, actually, which is the, the, the rate that PG&E has been increasing our bills, all of our bills. And I actually had a chat with the city manager about us actually reallocating some of the tax that we currently receive, the funding that we receive, towards a way to relieve some of our residents. In addition to how it affects residents, it also affects businesses. We're increasingly becoming a video streaming society, and for businesses, I remember when looking at Oakland to set up my third company, that we were concerned about some of the taxes in Oakland being intact. And for us to be a city of innovation, and yet, it's becoming increasingly expensive to be able to, I mean, part of innovation is the ability to, to have broadband. And, you know, I think that, you know, I'm, yeah, I'm definitely not a fan of, of anything that increases the utility rates for, for residents. And, and we're also just addressing the increase in fees that some of you have been experiencing from your landlords. And, yeah, I was just reading a report about certain cities where the amount of fees, and it's actually a term, I forget what the term is, but there, there's certain cities where fees have increased 200, 300% within a single year. And so, with it being focused on fees and utility bills, that already made it harder, and so, that 20% or 30% AMI that we just talked about with one of our... that we just talked about with one of our, with, with one of our future projects, that, yeah, it's great that you can afford to rent in Emeryville under those, those income guidelines, but then can you really live in Emeryville when you're getting all those fees from your landlord, you know, that aren't, that isn't covered, that, that we don't talk about? And then you're also the, the cost of utilities and everything else. And so, which makes it a lot harder to live here. And so I, I can't in good conscience support anything related to utility fees, and I definitely would fight it. You know, should that be a thing that comes up here in this day or, or out there in the streets.
Did we get the slide for the resolution back up on the screen? I just want to clarify. So we're not going to, we're not talking about approving any revenue measures. This is simply about adjusting the budget, right? Okay, so.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So I think we got a little preview of potential revenue measures, but we're, we're not discussing those and none are being proposed right now. Members, other discussion. Vice Mayor.
I, if you have this information, Brian, you can maybe share it. What is the loss in the property tax from the transfer to, to Sutter from Biomed Reality?
We don't know yet how much of it relates to the general fund and how much it relates to the successor agency. But we believe that the total could be something on the order of $500,000 or $600,000 a year. I should also mention that in some communities, what happens when one of these health foundations comes into town is if there is a development agreement, in some cases, the city might be able to negotiate a revenue-in-lie payment on either a one-time basis or annual to offset that sort of loss. So that's also something that the city may wish to entertain. Some cities do that, others don't. It's, again, a discussion going forward. But we wanted to highlight it in the report just so that you understood, not only was there this major one-time revenue, which was following the parameters of your Measure O from 2022, but also there was this loss. And we're going to take both into account as we develop the budget.
Thank you.
Other comments? Member Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to say briefly, and I know we'll have time in a few weeks when we come back for next year's budget. But just to, I think we all know, but the Sutter payment is, as of right now, a one-time payment. So we should, you know, I'd like to avoid using that to balance one year of budget. As nice as that was, as easy as that would make one meeting, it would make future meetings much more difficult. So I think just to, you know, but, and we will see what that, what that development turns, it turns into. But, you know, being smart about using that money strategically and not getting ahead of ourselves in terms of spending big because, you know, it's, it's a one-time, one-time balance.
Member Pryforce?
I know that, that fiscally, that has been the guiding philosophy that's guided the city. And that's how we ended up in the situation that we, we ended up in. And so I understand the, the use of one-time funds and that we, we definitely want to manage that appropriately. At the same time, we are in a difficult situation. And so the best thing that we can do is not necessarily focus on spending that money, but how do we invest that so that it can make more money for the city? And so, and that usually means spending, but, but thinking about it as more so an investment. How do we invest in Emeryville? How do we invest in the people of Emeryville in order to, to not be placed in a situation that, that, that got us here?
Members, any additional comments or a motion?
I can make the motion to approve the item.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have department head reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad Smalley, Community Development Director. This is my report on the Planning Commission actions taken at their March 27th, 2025 meeting. All six current members of the commission were present with one vacancy. You made an appointment last month of a commissioner to that vacancy, and he will be sworn in at the next Planning Commission meeting. The commission reviewed a major sign permit application for Total Wine &amp; More located at 3938 Horton Street. The commission unanimously approved that application. The commission also held a study session for a major conditional use permit for a Rivian service center to be located at 1483, 1487, and 1499 67th Street. This is a location formerly occupied by Engine World. The commission was generally pleased with the application, requested additional information, provided feedback to the applicant. And we anticipate this item will be back to the commission for a public hearing tentatively in May of this year. This concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Members, any questions? Next, we have future agenda item requests from council members. Any future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
I'd like to place a future agenda item, land acknowledgement, particularly the Alonee people, for that to be included in our openings when we start our, when we start our, our, our meeting, our main meeting. So I'd like to place that as a future agenda item again.
Members, with a show of hands is their support for adding land acknowledgements to a future agenda. Seeing no additional hands, the motion fails. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
I'd like to place, if no one else has a future agenda item, I'd like to place on the future agenda the, a discussion over the Pledge of Allegiance returning to city council chambers as I will demonstrate. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, with a show of hands is their support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda. Seeing no hands, the proposal fails. The time is 8:48. This meeting is adjourned.